Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is the Riverhead Planning Board meeting. If you can please stand and join us with the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings today, and first up on our discussion items is Carson Woods' major subdivision with Greg Bergen. Good afternoon, Greg.
Good afternoon. All right. So this will be a pretty quick follow-up on an application that the Planning Board is reviewing. As you'll recall, back in November of 2023, this board approved two maps. One was an as-of-right yield map, which was a nine-lot yield map. The second was an eight-lot Long Island Workforce Housing Act compliant sketch plan. And this is a proposed major subdivision of a vacant wooded 20-acre parcel located in Jamesport. It's located at the terminus of Fox Lane and Zamaki Lane. It shares its property boundaries to the east with a preserved farmland. To the west, there is a town of Riverhead flood control parcel, as well as several single-family residents to the west and along Fox Lane. So the applicant in the furtherance of the eight major subdivision applications submitted the preliminary plat, along with the grading and engineering, the road and drainage profiles, and an amended full environmental assessment form. So at this point, the application is an unlisted action pursuant to SEACRA. We are recommending that the Planning Board request lead agency and commence coordinated SEACRA review. Now that we have the layout of the subdivision and the proposed water mains, we can analyze the impacts of it. I did note that there were two things that stuck at that will require, need to be addressed and looked at through the SEACRA review. One of them, on page 12 of the EIF, it is noted that the subject property is a potential habitat or within the vicinity of the northern long-eared bat habitat. So this would have impacts on potential clearing restrictions, which are restricted to between December 1st and February 28th of any calendar year. And the full EIF also indicates that the project site is located in or adjacent to a potentially archaeologically sensitive area. So during the coordination process, we will refer the plans to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. As the board may recall, when we were reviewing the sketch plan of this application, I believe it was Chairman Dzieski, he recommended, in addition to the northern portion of the lot being clustered, he recommended the retention of a 50-foot buffer along the eastern property line, which will be incorporated into that open space. As you can see on the bottom of page four, what that will accomplish is that will sort of keep that existing tree line along that preserved farm field, so it'll keep that vista, you know, to be looking at the backs of residential properties.
What was the reason then for keeping the buffer? The buffer? Because of the trees?
Well, so, one of the original sketch plans that we reviewed just had the northern portion adjusted. Can we zoom out a little bit on the map? A little bit more? So, if you may recall, when we originally, one of the first sketch plans we looked at, just had this northern portion of the property as preserved. Chairman Dzieski recommended incorporating a 50-foot buffer along this eastern boundary. So like I said, on page four, on the bottom of the staff report of page four, you can see a screenshot of the vista that is taken looking in the northwesterly direction across that preserved farm field. So Ed, when he recommended that, the thought was the retention of that tree line across that farm field, so that way it doesn't just get cleared and you're looking at the backs of residential properties. Really, just good design guideline, you know, good design criteria and consideration. It is one of the things that the town code cluster requirement has the board consider. One of them is specifically town code section 301-296(c) for clustering that the Planning Board shall demonstrate the ways in which scenic vistas are being considered or enhanced, and shall depict a lot arrangement which has considered the visual impacts of residential development upon such vistas. So it's really just, as you're heading west along Main Road, you're going to see that tree line. It's not going to be cleared.
Are they going to put a fence along that line?
So that is something that I did bring up in the report. That's something that we have done on other subdivisions, because a lot of times what happens is people just sort of encroach into buffer areas and all of a sudden, the trees are gone. So that was one thing I did ask the board to consider. For the Villas Ronoc up on Sound Show Road, we did require a split rail fence. Again, just to provide some type of physical delineation to identify to somebody, like, here's where your property ends. So, I mean, if the boards, does the board agree that there should be some type of fencing along that buffer?
It's either that or you run those lines right up to the property line.
Yeah.
Because the encroachment obviously will take place.
Yeah.
Well, Greg, just to the east of it is the sod farm.
Correct.
Right, right. What I like about the 50-foot buffer is that when they do do the plowing and the disking, it does get dusty, and it does help, you know, with the residentials on the west of, you know, of that buffer. You may lose sight of the beautiful sod farm, but, you know, you can't have everything.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just, so, again, one of the criteria for clustering, so, does consider to reduce to the maximum extent practicable any nuisance or conflict between residential and agricultural uses. So, I mean, again, so the board, in its approval of the sketch plan, you know, the preliminary plat just really formalizes the sketch plan and lays out the engineering of it. In its approval of the sketch plan, I really think the board took into consideration all of these factors, and considering the size of the property and its unique features, being that it's vacant and wooded, really, you know, presented, you know, approved the optimal sketch plan for this property. They will be coming, they will propose an extension of Fox Lane, which will extend the right-of-way. And there, they are going to install the water mains and hydrants. Just a couple of things.
Did you say that fencing will be included?
Well, I mean, that's, again, that's a question for the board to consider.
I think we should, we had brought that up before, and I believe that during that last go-around with this and the approval, we also had a neighbor who was farming right next door, and one of his concerns was the fact that, you know, he didn't want to be told that, well, you know, you can't go, you can't do your thing early in the morning because I'm a farm, I've been there, now you're a house, you know, and so. And it's very well stated in here that they outline what farming is and when it takes place and whatever.
Correct, and that's in our, that's in our.
It's in our right-to-farm code, so, I mean, there will have to be a note on the map, and there will have to be CNRs that'll file on the property. Basically, like you said, to, when you buy this property, you're acknowledging and you're aware that you're next to an agricultural operation, and that there are noise, odors, dust, et cetera. So one of the things that I've spoken with Mr. Finnegan about is the open space area. So the open space on this subdivision is going to be about 12.8 acres. One of the considerations in our subdivision code says that it needs to indicate whether the subdivision will be dedicated to the town governmental body, or an approved private conservation corporation, or to a property owners association. That's just something, I mean, we don't need to know that at this point, but as, before we get towards any approvals, that is something we'll need to address. The applicant should really just consider what the ultimate intention is. So, I mean, again, just regarding the state of the property, you know, our town code, it is located in the Agricultural Protection Zone, which states that the purpose is to preserve prime agricultural soils. Now, this property is unique in that it does contain essentially 100% of prime agricultural soils, but it is not farmed and it is wooded. So when you go back and you look at figure one in the staff report, that's a really high-level overview of the area. This is one of the last wooded tracts of land in that area, so, I mean, I would consider that a unique feature. So I would recommend that the area be required to be remain in its natural state and not to be cleared.
Now, do they get a reduction in taxes since it's open space? How does that work, Greg?
I have been instructed by our assessor not to comment on taxes. We can have her come in. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth with something.
I mean, you're leaving it as open space. I mean, somebody has to pick up the taxes? Are the homeowners there, or?
Yeah, so, I mean, so, if it's going to be in a property owners association, I mean, somebody would be paying a tax bill on it. I mean, again, what it's assessed at and what the tax, the actual value of it is, that I can't comment on, but there would be no development potential, so I'm sure that would affect its taxable value.
Would the town be interested in taking it, or?
I have raised that question, and I was told no, that we would not be taking.
Okay, that's what I think.
You know, it creates a liability issue, maintenance issue. Again, not that there's really any maintenance of open space, but.
Because you're considering it as Lot 9, you know, of the sub.
I mean, that's just, that's just, it needs to be, you know, lots need to be labeled and numbered on a map, so it is considered Lot 9, but it is, you know, the result of clustering, so there would be no development potential there.
One question, around the recharge basin, are there going to be trees somewhat set up? I know you have to, you know, dig your base and everything else, but when you're pulling into a development like that, and then you see the recharge basin right to the right, is there any way to, you know, tree that area before, or?
So there are landscaping requirements and tree planting requirements in our road and drainage standards. So that recharge basin would have to be designed to town standards, which would include fencing and landscaping, so that way you don't just see an open recharge pit. And one other, just note regarding the recharge basin, the map right now shows a proposed gas main easement running through the eastern side of that recharge basin. I would just recommend that any recharge basin now be owned by the town should not be encumbered by a gas main, so I think it would be pretty easy to sort of just flip that gas main to the western part of the open space and encumber that portion with the easement. That's a pretty simple fix. So the next step in the application, I have a resolution on it to classify the action and circulate a lead agency request to involve agencies. We'll be able to get out the coordination materials this afternoon. We would wait, there's a 30-day required coordination period, after which we can make a determination of significance. I would advise the applicant, I would anticipate some comments coming back from SHPO about a Phase 1 archaeological assessment, because it is in a potentially archaeologically sensitive area, so I'd probably advise the applicant to begin that, so we can reduce any time after that coordination period.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Thank you, Greg. Okay, next up, we have BP Gas Station for side and site work with Matt Chardis. Good afternoon, Matt.
How you doing?
Big V?
How you doing? Sure, from High Point. Just introduce yourself for the record, please. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Stewart, STUART, from High Point Engineering. We're here as the engineer of record on behalf of our applicant BP Products NA for the application in front of me. All right, pretty straightforward on this one. We have an administrative site plan application. This is to redo the facade. If the board recalls back in 2021, there was an administrative site plan to do it. To do an Atlantis convenience store with the 16-seat Dunkin' Donuts and some site work on the site, you know, during a final inspection, the planning staff did, they went up to the site. Obviously, it's not a plant anymore. It looks like it's marked for BP, so we didn't require them to come in to modify the elevations. All the other site work looks like it's been done according to the original approval. This would just be to approve the BP facade, so they're replacing the fascia on both the building and the canopy and doing a little milling in the.
Right, the maintenance paving.
Just some maintenance paving. That's about it.
Nothing's going to be changing with the tanks or anything like that. It's just strictly facade.
Facade and pavement maintenance, basically.
So condition of approval, they'll have to go to Airbnb next week to get their sign off. Other than that, all the conditions of their original approval will still apply. So this is just for the facade.
Matt, all the parking, I see they did striping already.
Yep.
There's enough parking for the Dunkin' Donuts, or?
No Dunkin' Donuts anymore. Just a convenience store. That was the old application, sorry.
Same number of spaces.
Yep.
Is this going to be a 24-hour operation, or is it?
To be honest, I'm not familiar with the hours of, whatever was previously approved, it's staying the same as it was. It's, there's nothing changed from the previous approvals, whether that may be.
I don't think it was specified, actually.
Do you remember?
I don't think so. I don't recall.
I don't recall it.
Did it specify, Greg?
I mean, I don't think industrial B has any restriction on hours of operation.
Yeah, it's industrial B.
So, I mean, one would assume, but it's not, there's no restrictions on a 24-hour business.
All right.
Anybody have anything?
No. That's good. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate your time. Have a great day.
Yes. Next up is Venetia Square with Matt Chardis.
Come on.
Good, Matt. All right, if anyone could just introduce themselves for the record.
I'm Vin Corrado. I'm with the Plaine Associates. We are a traffic consultant to the town of Riverhead.
Good afternoon. Chick Voorhees of Nelson Puth Voorhees, environmental planning consultants to the applicant. Thank you.
Sure, and Dale Koch with Bowler Engineering, civil engineer for the applicant.
Okay, a little bit of an oldie but a goodie to kind of sum everything up, so members will know what we're talking about here. This is Venetia Square. It is a site plan application on 25A at 6435 Route 25A in Wading River, just to the east of the Rothwell Funeral Home opposite Dogwood Drive. They are coming in for 27,000 square feet of retail with two 10,000-square-foot buildings and one 7,000-square-foot building, one 4,000-square-foot bank with a drive-thru, one 6,000-square-foot building containing a 3,000-square-foot, 76-foot, 76-seat restaurant, and two 1,500-square-foot takeout restaurants with 16 feet each, 16 seats each, I'm sorry. If the board recalls back in June of last year, June 8th, 2023, we retained LKMA to review the traffic report that was supplied by the applicant on this. Obviously, review's been going on for quite some time, but we're in a good place at this point to review and talk about next steps. They are proposing a light at the Dogwood Drive intersection, as well some changes to the signal timing at Wading River Manor Road and Route 25A. I can turn it over to Vin to kind of summarize where they're at, and then we'll move forward.
Thanks. The application with the traffic impact study was written by Schneider Engineering, and it was reviewed fairly extensively by my former boss, Ray De Bias, who retired in January. There was a number of rounds of comments, that all of which were resolved. They successfully mitigate their traffic. Actually, the driveway that they're proposing opposite Dogwood wouldn't function without the traffic signal, so, and the applicant has agreed to install it. Obviously, that's a function of permitting from New York State DOT. There's a letter from State DOT from May of this year saying that they conceptually agree with the installation of the signal pending a whole bunch of conditions being met, one of which is the installation of left-turn lanes on 25A, one for Dogwood and one for turns into the site. The applicant has also offered to provide a dedication to put sidewalk along the frontage on 25A. DOT usually requires that as a function of development on their right-of-way. So, as far as we're concerned, we've been waiting to see the traffic signal plans that meet the requirements of the DOT, but we have not seen them yet. I understand around the development, but it would be, installation of the signal, I think, would be beneficial in general for that area, because it would also allow safer lefts in and out of Dogwood, and also create gaps on 25A to, for other driveways locally to make lefts on and off 25A, which is difficult. But, you know, all that being said, the change zone or the approval, in my opinion, should be conditioned on the ultimate approval on installation of that traffic signal.
I have an objection with the traffic light, and actually, where the driveway is opposite Dogwood Drive like that, out of all the roads in Wading River leading to 25A, Dogwood Drive is on a steep incline. And in the past two years, they just put this rails to trails and they call it. It's a bicycle jogging pedestrian path that people exercise on. And people have a tendency just to come across Dogwood Drive without looking. Okay, a couple weeks ago, a kid was hit. It wasn't reported. My neighbor saw it. Car stopped and knocked the kid to the ground off a skateboard. He got up, said, "I'm okay," and ran off. Okay, another time, a school bus was coming down the street, and a car stopped for a pedestrian, and the school bus had to zip around the car, going into oncoming traffic to avoid rear-ending the car. My concern with the traffic light there is, when you get to 25A, you know you have to stop at a stop sign. If there's a green light on 25A, and people, they say, "Well, I want to make this light," now they juice it a little bit in order to make the light, whether they're going to make a left turn or a right turn, or go straight across into the new shopping center. I think it can cause a problem. There's a little church on the east side of the street where they have functions, especially this time of the year, they have basketball at night for kids and stuff. There's kids running back and walking across the street. They're usually Sunday morning for their services. They put people out on the street with cones to try to slow people down, but they're not always successful. People, people do what people do, you know. They're in a hurry to go somewhere. They're not slowing down for anybody. And I think what would happen with this driveway being right across from Dogwood, if traffic is slow on 25A, anybody who lives north of 25A, up near the firehouse, behind St. John's Church, or going over off North Wading River Road, people would be taking Dogwood Drive as a shortcut going up to Gully. I have, I live on Dogwood, and I have people from North Country Road and from those streets up in that area, they drive by, "Oh, we saw you cutting your grass. We seen you washing your car." You know, everybody lets you know. So I know people are going out of their way to avoid the intersection on Wading River Manor Road in 25A and using Dogwood as a shortcut. And if there's going to be restaurants in there, like food deliveries and stuff, people are getting no reach, you're going to get these people running up and down the street also. I just think it's a poor mix with that rails to the trails, because you get people coming off the thing. They have their airboats in, they're on their bicycles. They're supposed to stop. There are stop signs, but they don't. And I think.
Yeah, these are raw functions of the notion that the development would go there. It doesn't change the fact that the signal would make the operation of their driveway better. You know, I completely understand your concerns, legitimate concerns, but if, you know, we look at it from the aspect of access to this particular drive, those are considerations for the board to take into account as to whether or not you approve it, right?
You know, I'd much rather see the exit be further to the east, and no other store in Wading River has a traffic light in front of it. A lot of them, they have signs up that says, "Exit to the right only."
If the capacity analysis shows that the driveway won't function, you know, won't provide acceptable levels of service, or there have to be significant turn restrictions there, I would believe that I would think that the applicant, the reason why they're willing to foot the bill for a pretty expensive traffic signal, would be to allow the lefts in and out. Without the traffic signal, turn restrictions would have to be imposed on the operation of the driveway. That's entirely, you know, like I said, approval of it the way it is right now, I think should be conditioned on installation of the traffic signal. If you object to the traffic signal, then changes have to be made the way that property gets access. That's all for you guys, you guys to consider.
Yeah, it's going to make, I mean, we're going to rely on LKMA here. They are traffic experts. I mean, Vin's a traffic engineer. He knows, I understand your concerns, John. Generally, a signalized infrastructure is always going to be more safer than an unsignalized infrastructure or an intersection that only has a stop sign. I would say this could be leaning on somewhat of an enforcement issue. If people are speeding in the area, we could talk to the chief about that, but I'm going to rely that a signal is, you know, based on the data and the traffic study that was presented and reviewed, is going to improve the situation there.
I'd be willing to bet that there are more traffic accidents at 25A in Wading River Manor Road than there are on Dogwood Drive and 25.
Yeah, but this is going to make that.
Now, you're going to add more to it.
It's going to make the other intersection function better as well, because it's going to, like as Vin said, it's going to provide gaps. They're going to change the timing on that light as well, so there's better yellow times that are longer. I don't really have much more to add than, based on the level of improvement, they need to do the signal to mitigate their development, and it's going to improve that structure route.
Matt, do you, turning signal, I mean, the light itself is more appropriate than turning lanes?
It's going to have to have both. If you, the DOT comments that I sent out in the packet, they have to have, I believe, right-in, left-turn lanes.
I think DOT just said left-in, left turns. Yeah, both directions.
Yeah, I have it here. Single, both directions. Cross traffic signal design shall include eastbound and westbound left-turn lanes, crosswalks across New York State of 25A. The existing bike lanes shall be preserved at the intersection. So this was included in a previous review from 2018, but, you know, they're recommending that you still do that.
If this is the way, then something should be done at that spot where the pedestrian crossing is on Dogwood Drive, either make people stop there or bump something to speed on there. Something needs to be done.
Push button, yeah. It'd be push button.
That's for pet crossing on 25A. I think he's referring to the pet, the trail, right?
I'm talking about the trail.
You know, the trail is stop sign controlled, right?
Yeah.
Because the trail has stop sign control, not on Dogwood. That's right.
It's not stop signs for the vehicles.
Right, exactly. Dogwood is not controlled. The trail is controlled. Has stop signs, right?
But with that being said, the stop signs are about eight feet up in the air.
Yeah, so you don't hit your head on them when you're on a bicycle.
A 12-year-old kid.
No, it's so you don't hit your head on them when you're on a bicycle.
We could, I know further west on the trail that they do have sensor-based crossings, so it'll actually light the crosswalk. I mean, they're expensive, but that's something for the town to consider, obviously.
Yeah, you could put pet actuated rectangular rapid flashing beacon there. That would stop traffic. I mean, again, you're right, they are expensive. I'm not sure how many people on bicycles would stop to push the button. You know what I'm talking about? The flashing lights on the crosswalk. You know, they have ones that are actuated, that you push a button and you activate it to cross. You know, pets would probably use it, but I don't know how many bicyclists would stop to use it.
There is one to the west.
To the west?
Cross. It has a light on the street itself.
You know, John, I understand your concerns, and when I take a look at the way it's laid out, there is quite a distance between the intersection of 25A to the entrance to the actual shopping center. I mean, that's a fair amount of space there. I'm not sure if it's 507 feet. Is that what it is? I mean, that's a fair amount of.
That's the other room, the other driveway. There's two drivers, yeah.
I know. That's what I'm saying, that that would be coming into the center. Because you're not coming directly into it. You got to come in and then go into the center.
The eastern driveway is just for right out, right?
Right out, I think east, yeah.
Channelized, yep. And then to enter the site, you have to go to the western entrance at the light.
Is there a cross easement?
Yep, on both properties.
Potential, yeah.
Which is nice for those properties. Which is nice for those properties.
I know the owner of the funeral home wanted.
Yep, and that's on there.
Can use it.
Yeah, to make lefts off.
Yeah, that's shown here, so he can come out and then it goes to.
Probably to the east is not developed, but.
Yeah, it's a maze farm.
They're showing a.
Years ago, they had told him that he would be on the corner. It was supposed to be, yeah, Dogwood was supposed to continue across, you know, 25A, which they decided not to do it.
Yeah, and at one point in town, the town, the town was recommending a frontage road so you could come off, but that, that recommendation went away when this code came in recommending the cross access between sites. So yeah, we're just out for discussion today, obviously to iron out some of these issues. Some out, you know, things that we still need to tie up with the water district. They still need to do their map and plan, which is in the works. I'm told it's high on the pile with H2M, which is a good thing. And then, you know, once we get to that, cross that bridge, we can bring it back to consider a secret determination and schedule public hearing. Any other questions?
Just the easement to the May, Maze Farm.
Yep.
That would go directly to, now is it up further north or further south?
So it's right at the, the parking lot south of the retail building. So you see the 10,000 square foot retail building?
Right.
That's the easternmost building, just sort of south in that parking lot. That's where it would connect.
Okay.
And it's pretty much a straight, straight in line with the western cross access. So no action today. Any other questions, guys?
Uh, no, I just want to thank you. I think this is very helpful. This hasn't been in front of the planning board for quite a while. We've been working with staff. As Matt said, the map and plan is in preparation and Dale Koch from Bowler has submitted the revised DOT plan. We're going to submit that to Matt's office tomorrow, so you'll have that on record. We did have a hearing with the Pine Barrens Commission. This was a question going back over a year and they are poised to make a decision. We presume it will be an approval because there were no outstanding questions with Pine Barrens. Based on the configuration of the development, we meet the requirements for development of regional significance. Pine Barrens won't make that determination until they get the negative declaration from the planning board. So as Matt said, once these few items are buttoned up, we'd like to be back in front of you for a negative declaration. We'll return to the Pine Barrens Commission and then we'll be ready to move things forward.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Cool.
Thank you.
Leave me, Matt.
I think we're good.
Okay.
I'll get your copy then. Heather is the last one.
No, no discussion.
Oh, no discussion?
No.
Okay, next up, we have public comments on resolutions.
All right, I'll move resolution 2024 of 043 granting administrative, administrative approval for the site plan application of BP gas.
Second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I, I vote yes.
Resolution 2024 044 Carson Lloyd's Major Subdivision. Resolution clarifying a preliminary block submitted in furtherance of eight block major residential subdivision.
Vote, please, Mr. Menaro.
Second. I'll second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Menaro?
Aye. Aye.
Resolution approved. Okay, we, resolution, the third one ended here.
2024 45 Recommendation to the Town Board. Authorizing the transmission of a letter to the Town Board recommending changes to traffic patterns on East Second Street. So who?
Second.
Before we get into it, I'd like, I'd like a consideration. And that is, this is just for one block. I think the whole, the whole second, uh, third, second avenue should be all the way. This is just one little block.
The way. The, the way we drafted the le- the letter to open-ended to, to look at the, basically, however the Traffic Safety Committee would like to look at it. So it could be the whole, the whole length on each side, correct? Heather wrote it.
Well, so when Ed first brought this to the board, he presented us with a map and the, it looked like the one-way was ending at East Avenue. I mean, I can revise the text in the letter to make it more vague. You know, just say one-way on East Second Street rather than ending it at East Avenue, but the way that the map that he presented to us with the one-way was from, on East Second Street from East Avenue to Roanoke. And I think that's where we left off on discussion-wise at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But I can, you know, revise that language.
Wasn't at the last.
Oh, okay.
The one concern I have is there's only two blocks there, right? There's only two.
No, second, east.
I think there's only two.
Second street goes pretty long.
Yeah, Second Street goes all the way down.
No, but on the one side, there's only two intersections, isn't there? Because what I'm concerned about, what I'm concerned about is what happens to the parking line where Social Security is. That's used the line.
It's a cut-thru.
Yeah.
I've cut through that.
Yeah, well, I mean, a lot of people utilize East Second Street to get to the light on, um, at Astrander as well, where the aquarium is, where it dumps out onto, on Main Street. So, um, and, you know, we can revise this again to make the language a little less pointed and just say, you know, recommends consideration of one-way on East Second Street rather than ending it. But I, I remember when Ed originally brought this to the board, I think it was like a month and a half ago, at the May second meeting, he brought that sort of snapshot from GIS showing where he thought maybe one-way would work.
Except to the board.
Yeah, it's up to you. I don't want to leave it.
I mean, do we really need all that extra parking going all the way down Second Street if it's all one-way?
To alleviate the issues there in the, in those two places that are there, you know, the beer place, there's problems. And, and they need to really redo that, their own parking, the town parking area there. They really need to redo that.
Yeah.
Just clean it up a bit. Re, you know, redefine. You can pick up three spots there.
Well, that's something that, yeah, that was brought up too, as well. You know, Greg did sort of a, a quick drawing of the town parking lot. You know, if it were to be reconfigured and the curb cuts on Third Street cleaned up, we could probably pick up a lot more parking there.
Yeah.
But this letter was just, you know, the last meeting, Ed wanted us to draft a letter to send to the town board. So again, if you want, I can just revise that one sentence.
I, I, I'd like to see revised, but if the rest of the board wants to go the other way, go the other way.
So it's either the whole length or just the target area, is the question?
Well, Matt, I, and, and Joe, I, I agree with you, but I think if, if we did just, and, and not even if we're going to do, or if they think it's a good idea, I think you'll get much more pushback if you went the whole way.
Really?
People are so used to going that way.
I am, myself included.
But if you just do one block because you're only going around one block.
I mean, we don't even have to specify the block. I can omit the language. It says between East Avenue and Roanoke Avenue. We could just say, "Consider making a portion of East Second Street right of way."
I'll, I'll offer that it's a recommendation that's going to go to traffic, to the Traffic and Safety Committee. I mean, we can leave it as open as, as we want, so they can look at it in its entirety and mitigate as needed if they're going to.
Let them make the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the more important thing is that the planning board is recognizing that this is an issue and they want to make a, a transmission to the town.
Because I did count from east to Roanoke, East Avenue, you couldn't actually pick up 15 parking spots.
Just in that area.
Just, yeah, so I mean, I would, I'd hate to limit it to just a one snap, you know, one block and then if there's something, you know, 200 feet away that we're not aware of, let them decide.
Yeah, so do you want me to just omit the language between East Avenue and Roanoke Avenue and we'll, we'll leave the rest of it alone?
I think that should be fine.
Sure.
Yes.
Is there a recommendation as to the direction that this would go?
I'm sorry?
Is there a recommendation as to the direction that this would go?
I don't know. I know Ed had originally said going westbound, but Greg had brought up maybe going eastbound, so I don't think the board decided on which direction. I think we would probably leave that to the Traffic Safety Committee and the Town Board, Chief of Police, you know, people who are well-versed in traffic flow, so.
Okay, all right.
George, is that better?
Yeah.
Uh, Joe, better than?
So it has amended.
It's amended.
Yep.
Vote.
So can we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Menaro?
Aye.
I vote yes. Resolution adopted. All right. You have any public comments on what matters?
Sid, if you can just use the.
Okay.
Hi, Sid Baal, President, Waiting River Civic Association. How should I say this diplomatically? I, I think there's going to be a high degree of skepticism on the traffic issue with, with Venetia. I would hope that I'm wrong and everything's going to flow along, everything is going to move the way Matt hopes that it's going to move, but being on 25A, particularly on, on the weekends, not fun. Not fun at all. And I haven't, hadn't even thought about the, the issue of the rails, trails, you know, nearby. It's, it's, it's not an easy problem. I'm just concerned that it's going to make things worse. Now, here's another thing I'm going to say, except it's diplomatic, and maybe it's my problem. It is very difficult to hear you gentlemen. If, yeah, even with the mics.
Really?
Sitting in the first row, my hearing is, is imperfect and I have a lot of respect for Matt, but you are a soft-spoken son of a gun. Okay, and, you know, I can't wait to go home now and go to Channel 22 and see what.
See what it says.
I might have missed during this. And I'll come back at the next future meeting and apologize to, to everyone. But seriously, I am still concerned about the, the, the traffic issue and the timing of the two lights and the two intersections. And I know people have certain property rights and I'm aware of what the zoning is and the history of this particular parcel, but, yeah, I, I really am concerned about it. But thank you.
All right, back up.
Thank you, Sid.
All weekend, they back up, even beyond. Going west, going east?
I'll move the minutes of May 16, 2024. So who?
Second. Second, please?
Second.
Mrs. Zinnicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Menaro?
Aye.
I approve. Okay, any other business?
Yeah, what are we doing about July 4th?
July 4th, I am told that it's a holiday and.
It's a holiday.
Yeah, off from cancel.
So it's, there'd be no meeting.
I just didn't know whether they were going to have on the 5th or 3rd or something like that.
Wait, wait, it's good? Yeah.
So next meeting will be July 21st.
Okay, it has here the next me, no meeting on the 4th. Thursday, July 18 will be the next meeting. Okay. You're good?
Yep.
Meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned.
So move, second.
Third.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.